There we go. Welcome. It is Thursday, October the 15th, 2020, and this is a council meeting for Woodstock City Council. This meeting is being held electronically in accordance with section 238 subsection 3.3 of the municipal act and section 16.6.24 of the City of Woodstock procedural bylaw. This meeting is being live streamed on the city's YouTube channel and broadcast on Rogers TV. A recording of this meeting will also be posted on the city's website following the meeting. An agenda of the meeting can be found on the agendas, meetings, and minutes page of the city's website. Councillors will be raising their hands in view of the webcam when moving a motion, requesting to speak, and when a vote is being taken. If a member of council is disconnected or having technical difficulties, we will take a recess in order to attempt to rectify the issue. If technical difficulties exist that prevent the meeting from continuing, the meeting will be adjourned and reconvened at a later time. If a councillor needs to leave the meeting at any time, they are requested to inform the clerk. And all of the councillors can turn their webcams on now. And we'll start with any disclosure of pecuniary interest. And seeing none, we have the minutes from October 1st, 2020. Councillor Schattenberg.
A motion made by myself, councillor Mark Schattenberg, and seconded by councillor Connie Lauder, that the minutes of the regular meeting of Woodstock City Council held on the 1st of October, 2020, be adopted.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And our next item on the agenda is additions to the agenda, and we have quite a few additions. Councillor Schattenberg.
Yeah, motion made by myself and seconded by again councillor Connie Lauder, that the following additions be added to the agenda. Following items are 7C, it's a delegation, Wes and Longina Rzynski pertaining to ZN 8-20-15, application for zone change. 793 Devonshire Avenue, 7D, Alex and Barrett Stemler. And pertaining to ZN 8-20-16, application for zone change at 75 Brock Street. 7E, Daryl Benbow, ZN 8-20-16, application for zone change also 75 Brock Street. And 7F, Laura Stewart, ZN 8-20-16, application for zone change at 75 Brock Street.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. Our first delegation today is Trevor Ford from the Woodstock Professional Firefighters Association regarding a request to name a street after one of our fallen firefighters. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Your worship, Mayor Birch, council. Thank you for this opportunity to once again address council as a delegate on this matter. Special thank you to councillor Schattenberg for forwarding this matter to the city clerk, Amy Humphries. Jason Barnes, president of the Woodstock Professional Firefighters Association sends his regret, his regrets. He is working today, and as such, we couldn't guarantee his participation in this presentation. I am making this presentation on behalf of the Woodstock Professional Firefighters Association and of the family of Jack Wilford. I was a delegate before on council, to council on October 16th of 2018. I made a presentation to council to have brother Jack Wilford's name recognized as a street name in the city of Woodstock. Council of the day approved this during the council meeting to have Jack's name added to the list of possible street names in the future, and his name would be added to the list. To our surprise and disappointment, Jack Wilford's name was recently removed from the approved list of names. Brother Jack Wilford passed away on October 8th, 1989, of bladder cancer. He was raised on a farm just outside of Salford and lived his entire adult life in Woodstock and raised a family here. He is survived by three children, two stepchildren, and nine grandchildren. Jack Wilford was recognized as a line-of-duty death by the province of Ontario in 2008. His name was added to the firefighter memorial at Queens Park on October 5th, 2008. This is reserved for only for line-of-duty deaths for firefighters in Ontario. Jack Wilford's name was also recognized and honored on the Colorado Springs Memorial for line-of-duty deaths for firefighters across Canada and the United States. This happened on September 20th, 2008. Brother Wilford worked for the City of Woodstock Fire Department for 23 years before his untimely death. I am not sure of the criteria for a person's name to be considered and recognized and made a street name in the city of Woodstock. But I can't think of a better and more important reason than for someone who literally gave his life while working for the city of Woodstock. Jack Wilford is the only City of Woodstock Fire Department line-of-duty death, and as such, I believe he has given enough to have his name recognized. I am asking council to restore his name to the list of possible street names for the city of Woodstock. And I would not like, I do not want to have to make another presentation 12 years from now again to address this. Thank you, Mayor Birch and council, for giving me this opportunity once again to address this matter. If there are any questions or comments, I am more than willing to answer any of them.
Thank you. Questions of council? Councillor Accioni?
Through the chair to Mr. Ford. Trevor, thank you so much for presenting this. It was quite interesting to learn the story and everything. And certainly support a street being named in the future for them. So just want to say thank you.
Thank you, councillor Talbot.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you through to Trevor for bringing this back to our attention again, and I think it's a very worthy cause. I knew Jack. In fact, I was his neighbor for quite a few years, and I know a lot of the family as well. And your letter made me start thinking about how we recognize police officers who have fallen in the line of duty, especially lately with all the overpasses that have been named and such. So I think this small token of our appreciation for someone who succumbed to his death while working for the city and because of the particular job. I think this would be, it's a very small tribute, but a very worthy one.
Thank you. Councillor Schattenberg.
It's just more of a comment through the chair to Trevor Ford, the entire Fighter Fighters Association, the city of Woodstock. Back in February, there was a long list of city names that was projected, included the war themes and all kinds of other. So it was between myself, it'd be the original suggestion to the city, but through Karen Houston at the museum, the list was kind of, as they sort of say, edited and relooked at and changed, and a few different themes were added. And unfortunately, it would appear at that point in time, because I've looked back at the original list back in February, and Mr. Wilford's name was certainly on that list at that point in time. I would say it was more of an oversight than anything else, that his name didn't appear this time around, because there are other historical names or other significant names in the city of Woodstock that aren't former mayors and former MPPs and whatnot, that are still are on the current list of street names possible, but obviously, for some reason, Mr. Wilford's name, Jack Wilford's name did fall off that list. So I guess I can apologize among council, but that will certainly fix that situation.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none? Thank you very much. Our next delegation is David Simpson, the Director of Public Works for Oxford County regarding the North Oxford inter-community transit system. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Birch and members of council, for the opportunity to present. I'll just pull up my presentation. I trust you can all see that. And reconfirming that this was sent earlier by the council meeting deadline, so I'll carry on. Just a quick, short agenda today. I know we don't have a lengthy period of time to go over a lot of innate details, but certainly we'll be able to cover off the general importance of intercommunity transportation. I would like to bring Woodstock Council up to speed on some of the findings from our countywide public education and consultation campaign on this proposed service. We also have some actual costing in from bus vendor market in terms of what the service would cost. And then I'll share with you, as I've had to other area municipalities, the financial details and implications there with opportunity for questions at the end. So I won't spend much time on this slide. Obviously, there's been a longstanding need to service intercommunity bus transit in the rural areas for several decades, not only within the county and across the region. There's a number of obvious benefits to this type of service. Basically, that need's been well documented, not only at the county level, but in many other strategic documents, including future Oxford in terms of that real key support that intercommunity bus service can introduce to connect communities and connect to residents. I'm sure you're all very fully aware of running your own transit system already, the benefits of access, enhanced access and mobility. So again, this is just a quick note of some of those innate positive outcomes that help to address community economic and environmental challenges. So just a bit of detail here on the scope of the consultation campaign that we ran earlier in the summer. It was a six-week campaign. You can see the range of outreach there in point one. We did also bring in Community Employment Services as well as ROEDC to really get a greater outreach and target of our business community across county with a virtual meeting there on August 12th. We did reach out for a number of online surveys, had reasonable feedback there, as you can see, both from the general public and over 61 businesses. So I thought what I would do is just highlight some of the key countywide findings there. I don't think these will be of any surprise necessarily to the council today, but again, the main driver from the public's perspective for the need of the service is that they would use the service both within and outside the county for work, access to healthcare, leisure purposes, or access to other modes of transportation. You'll be pleased to see that Woodstock was listed as the number one location that residents would choose to use that service. And again, people are traveling either to and from Woodstock from both within the county as well as out of the county, as you can see there. We also reached out to get a sense of what proposed tax levy riders might be comfortable and residents might be comfortable paying for this type of service, along with the approximate fare fees. So you can see in point four, there's some of the feedback we got, that the majority of respondents indicated they thought that that fare range ranging from $8 to $12 per one-way trip was amenable. Similarly, on the business side, I don't think there's any real surprises here. We all know the real key need to attract and retain workforce in our business survey. That was certainly identified as a key priority for many of the companies with over 50% of the the companies that we targeted, and that was 60, 61-plus businesses there identified transportation as one of their most important factors in gaining workforce access. Again, similar to, excuse me, similar to the general public, Woodstock was identified as the number one location that employees would travel to and from, both within and out of county destinations, as noted there. 40% of the employers responded that this proposed service would help connect their employees to their specific workforce, and we also did some teasing out to get a sense of what the key or most common shift start and stop times were, which were deemed to be around 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. So just quickly, we had authorization to proceed with the RFP. That RFP was issued earlier in September by the township of Zora. Just a few terms there on the level of service that was positioned in that RFP, and it also shows you the size of the community bus that was proposed, and we saw financials and bidding on that. I won't have a lot of time to get through the entire route in detail here. You can see the bold red road. Obviously, that's providing key connectivity there from the north part of the county all the way into Woodstock with a number of key strategic interregional connections, both out of the Woodstock Transit Hub as well as key interconnections with the Grand River Transit System in New Hamburg, as well as the Stratford intercommunity bus system in Shakespeare that will be launched later this fall. The other two key intercommunity systems that are already up and running are the Middlesex intercommunity bus system that runs from the west all the way into the Woodstock hub, as does the TGO intercommunity bus service, which runs to Woodstock and back, which also provides a west corridor link further to the west and to the outskirts of London. Very typical bus size that's been recommended by most of the municipalities that are providing this type of service. So a little bit different than the conventional transit bus size you would use here in Woodstock. This is a more more well-suited for cross-country trips to the tune of about 20 passengers. So just quickly, for those of you that may not be that familiar on the collaboration and the partnership that's proposed, back in August, we framed this as a four-way partnership between the county and our three area municipalities in the north, as noted. One of the lower tiers will be acting as the lead operating transit authority. Right now, we have had some discussions with Zora, perhaps taking on that role and/or perhaps EZT. Basically, with this type of contract, we're putting all the liability, the lion's share of the liability on a third-party bus carrier vendor, who would be responsible for the overall contract management and coordination. They would basically take the money that's funded to purchase and procure and own and operate a bus, as well as fully outfit that bus with staffing and equipment as appropriate. So in terms of promoting the service, it's kind of a collaboration there, again, with our employee services teams, the area municipalities as well as the county. And similarly, we thought this would be a great model where we could use the Southwest Community Transit Association as a key overseeing advisory board, as it's currently doing for a number of other intercommunity bus systems that are already up and running. I think obviously Woodstock's very familiar with the provincial transit gas tax funding, so I won't spend much time on that. The financial plan will be heavily based on receiving provincial gas tax for this initiative to the tune of about a 50% subsidy. To be eligible for that type of subsidy, as you know, you need to be making municipal contributions. So right now, there's a number of contributions noted there to be funded by local municipal tax levies. And then the county would be coming in with the form of a grant to help out with startup capital and annual operating costs. And obviously, as you know, there'd be additional revenue through ridership over time. So we did get bids back on the RFP, just a few details noted there. At this point, township of Zora does have a recommended preferred bus transit carrier provider deemed for award. It's obviously not been awarded yet until we basically know where all the financial commitments and contributions sit, and whether or not those have been adequately secured to the degree that the service could be awarded. So a lot of details here on this major financial slide. Basically, this is exact costing from the preferred award vendor in terms of the expenses line there. So our original cost estimation on the service back in August, we assumed about $125,000 for that bus purchase. It actually came in a little bit later at about $140,000, $140,000. And then similarly, the ongoing operational costs year in, year out, we're pretty much paying on to what we had estimated back in August. So again, that contract service is looking at a fixed flex stop schedule. It starts off for nine months of the year in 2021 at three days a week, and then progresses to five, 12 months a year at five days a week from 2022 onward. Obviously, there's marketing involved. There's some measures there for COVID. And as you can imagine, some funds in there for a part-time contract transit coordinator that would help liaise with that service provider, obviously play a very big role in the business outreach and marketing and promotion of that service, as well as the ongoing liaison with the MTL Strategic Transit Investment Office with their annual reports, their auditing, and overseeing that cash flow up and down from the province. So I believe this to be a very positive financial model. It's not heavily vested on ridership fair revenue to make it viable and successful. You can see we've got a nominal amount of fair revenue proposed there in the first line of funding. You can see the respective municipal contributions that were posed back in August for means of gaining access to that provincial gas tax funding. So overall, you can see there's a fairly large, well, a good surplus in year one to the tune of about $83,000. We're proposing to immediately put that in a transit reserve so that that balance can grow over time and then serve to fund that next bus replacement six, seven years down the road in approximately 2027. So that's kind of how those numbers work out. Outside of that surplus deficit line, you know, you can see the nominal surpluses were running there without kind of overstepping or beefing up that reserve beyond what we feel is appropriate for the costs that are being incurred. So again, just based on time, I can't really go through that in a lot more detail. Got that information in front of you for sure. We have been very transparent to the three area municipalities in the north in terms of what their municipal contributions would mean in terms of a localized tax levy based on their service population. So you can see the range of costs there for those three area municipalities, which is about $2.5 to approximately $3. I know Mayor Birch had sought to see what that number might be if the county was not involved. And I could confirm that approximately that, those numbers you see in front of you would then grow to a dollar value of $3.65 per person. So that would obviously increase to that extent. I'll just quickly wrap up here and then open up the floor for any questions you may have. This is just the work plan that was presented to the collaborative partnership. So you can see the items that we've completed in terms of items one to five. As you know, we're out seeking key financial commitments, not only at the area municipalities, but also at the county level. We'll be going back to county council later this month to hopefully seek endorsement of that grant I mentioned earlier. And then if all the worlds align there, potentially the township of Zora or EZT would be in a position to award that service late October, early November. And then that period between November and spring 2021 would just be the ramp up to market and brand that service and ideally get that up and running by spring 2021. So on that note, Mr. Mayor, I'll wrap up my presentation and certainly appreciate any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions of council? Councillor Fraser?
I think he may be muted.
Councillor Fraser, sorry, we'll have to get your mic on. Sorry.
Sorry, I must have hit the button twice.
There we go.
There we go. Thank you. Going back to your outreach message, Mr. Simpson, in your presentation, your social media paid ads reached not quite 7,000 people with 560 engagements. And your regular social media outreach was reached over 22,000 people with 1,500-plus engagements. Out of those engagements, do you have any records to show that what was positive engagements and what was negative engagements?
Yeah, we need to reach back to our strategic communications to get that layer of detail. I can give you some metrics on the surveys in terms of the number of respondents that we receive specifically in Woodstock, if that's of any value.
Yeah, that would be my next question.
Okay, so on the general public survey, we got respondents from 27 general public members in Woodstock. Some of the key findings there were that 75% of those respondents were willing to pay a fare to use that service. And 57% of those respondents were willing to fund a countywide contribution as well. So those were some of the key points that came back from the general public there on the 27 respondents in Woodstock. Additionally, of the 61 businesses I mentioned earlier, 13 of those businesses were in Woodstock. Nine of those 13 businesses indicated that attracting and retaining workforce was a priority. Secondly, the majority of those 13 Woodstock employers indicated they had several employees traveling from Tavistock, Drumble, Intercoop, and/or out of county from London, Stratford, KW, Cambridge, and Branford to reach their employer destination in Woodstock. Six of those 13 respondents, those business respondents, indicated that they believed that proposed route would help connect their specific employees to their workplace. So just some quick, quick numbers there that we've got back from a lot of the great work that was done by Community Employment Services and ROEDC.
Thank you. Would you be able to stop sharing your screen, please, Mr. Simpson, so we can get back to a regular view? And then I guess a follow-up to your response to councillor Fraser there. So those businesses that gave you the favorable responses, they were aware of the timing and the route details that this would not get their people to work? But they were still giving a positive recommendation, or was this based on not having details of route timing, et cetera?
Yeah, obviously, Mayor Birch, we don't have exact route timing till potentially this whole system proceeds and the vendors onboard and running it. But what was communicated to the businesses is that the general AM and PM peak hour coverage times would be offered, ranging anywhere from a 6:00 or 6:30 AM to 10:00 or 10:30 AM coverage in the morning. And then similarly, about a 2:00 or 2:30 to 6:00 or 6:30 PM coverage at a minimum. So that seemed to fit quite nicely with that most common shift start time of 8:00 AM and most common shift stop time of 5:00 PM. You're certainly correct that there's a number of businesses where that schedule may never fully align with their exact shifts, and that's just kind of a reality of 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 how it goes with that.
Thank you. Councillor Schattenberg.
Yeah, to the mayor, to David Simpson, our director of public works. I always wanted to do some of the mathematical calculations on this. For example, in 2021, you'll note that contributions from the three north townships to be at 15,000. And then 120,000 from the county of Oxford, which means obviously people from the city of Woodstock who would be paying about 40% of that amount would be making a significant contribution. Why would the numbers not be higher for the townships in the in the north that are obviously receiving the largest benefit from this proposal?
Yes, through the mayor, through the council. Thank you for that well-informed question. Obviously, the county's proposed grant there of $120,000 was really to overcome some of the significant hurdles that typically make you know, localized transit unaffordable for the large majority that try and enter into it. We came into the fold specifically to do the best we could to leverage provincial gas tax funding, and by making that substantive grant contribution, you'll see essentially we're getting 75 cents back on the dollar for every dollar spent there in 2021 outside of the fair revenue. So that really put us in a strong position to get a sizable amount of money put away immediately into that reserve fund so that the ongoing annual operating costs are quite nominal going forward, and that big cost burden of capital is already well-managed.
Continue, councillor Schattenberg.
I guess as a follow-up, and you said the exact timing of the buses hasn't been finalized yet. Well, will the bus always be going on that map through the north part of the county on a clockwise direction, or would it revert to a counterclockwise direction for the second half of the day, or specifically, how would that be going? Because you would almost logically think it would make more sense to have two buses, one going clockwise, one going counterclockwise on that route. logically think it'd make more sense to have two buses, one going clockwise, one going counterclockwise on that route.
Yes, thank you through the mayor to the councillor. Obviously, I didn't have much time to speak to details on that routing. And just to clarify, yes, there would be clockwise and a counterclockwise route both in the AM and PM peak period. Pending the validation by the preferred bus vendor, we may find out that there's even additional operating hours within that cost estimate that might be applied to a midday service. So for the purpose of that cost model, it's it's currently based on one bus operating up to eight operational hours per day.
Continue.
Just getting back to the funding side of it, Mr. Simpson, just curious as to why contributions would be made by the three townships. That obviously makes sense and to some degree, the county of Oxford itself. And I understand connectivity is very important to eventually get to KW and Stratford. But why would contributions to this busing system not be requested to Waterloo region to gain New Hamburg and to Perth County to gain Shakespeare into the picture?
Thank you through the mayor to the councillor. We've obviously had a number of discussions with our neighboring municipalities. We were not successful in seeking any interaction from a service standpoint with the proposed Stratford intercity route. Obviously, the Grand River Transit Route there from New Hamburg across is already well established and up and running. So we're purely seeking to leverage that interconnections there. And then with respect to any potential funding to the inter community systems like Stratford, like Tilsonburg, like Middlesex, basically, they would be ineligible to receive funding at this time, given that they've already got community transportation grant funding.
Thank you. Further questions of council? Councillor Fraser?
Thank you, worship, and through Mr. Simpson. So going back to the surveys, if we had twenty seven responses from the general public. And seventy five percent of those were willing to pay a full price. I suppose I'm having trouble with the twenty seven people of our general public of forty two thousand people. It's even hard to get a percentage of that. But when we go over to the financial side, Woodstock taxpayers are actually picking up a fair chunk of that hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which doesn't really equate to a percentage of the population whose tax base is going to contribute to that money. So I'm struggling with that and I'm also struggling with with the routes and getting people to our industries on time for work and back. I guess that's more of a statement unless you can clarify something for me. I just don't see. I have complaints now about our own transit system and lack of ridership. If this has lack of ridership, the complaints will be, shall I say, more like a volcano erupting? If you could maybe have any comments on that.
Yes, thank you through the mayor to the councillor. Certainly appreciate that important concern. As we all know, transit does cost money to operate. I know we've had some dialogue already at the county council level on that very facet. Obviously, from a county perspective, we do see inherent value in this countywide transportation model. Again, bringing not only residents within the county, but bringing in residents from out of county that are trying to get to work inside the county. Similarly, there's almost fifty percent of the workforce of residents that live in the county that actually work outside of the county. So we're doing what we can to better position that connectivity for the workforce to their place of employment as well as give residents that ability to get to key other key destinations, both within the county and outside of the county. The the county contribution there is obviously well positioned to broadly support transportation from a countywide need, if you will.
So, sorry, just to clarify, a countywide system and a countywide need. So are you saying that some of that funding is gonna pay for the independent system in the south that Tilsonburg arranged on its own without county help? Or that some of that funds is gonna go to augment the Woodstock transit system? How are you saying it's a countywide contribution? I'm not sure what you're saying there.
Thank you, Mayor Birch. Yes, specifically, anything that has inherent value over an area that's broader than just one jurisdiction or one area municipality. So in our opinion, this is providing connectivity of the north to the systems that are already up and running in the south. I already have had a number of conversations with Tilsonburg and the mayor there in terms of how this similar model could look for their system once their community transportation grant funding expires in twenty twenty three. And you'll see that in deliberation later in the month with the upcoming council report. So it's definitely a position to be considered more broadly even beyond what we're pegging as the north system right now. In my mind, there's no reason why a similar model couldn't be applied for the south system to help it sustain itself post twenty twenty three.
Okay, so just to clarify, so if if this somehow makes it through the the triple majority vote that's required, it opens the floodgates to a regional transit system? Like you'll be you'll be taking over the Woodstock system as well, once you take over the Tilsonburg system?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarity, the county would not be the transit operating authority. The the, as I said earlier, either the township of Zora or east Zora Tavistock would act as the transit operating authority. So from a county perspective, there's no need for us to seek that title and thereby there's no need to seek a triple majority as you positioned.
Okay, actually, so so you're saying that Zora or East Zora will take over Tilsonburg's transit then and Woodstock's transit? I'm still trying to understand what you're trying to communicate.
Thank you, Mayor. They would just be operating the specific intercommunity bus system.
Okay, so it wouldn't be a countywide network as you had just stated prior to my question. It would just be their independent township system. Why does, why, okay, I'll leave it at that. Further questions of council? Councillor Tate?
Yeah, through the chair to Mr. Simpson. I have a couple of questions. First off, I'll start with just for council's benefit. The three townships had their vote last, I think, October seventh. And Blanford Blenheim turned it down, Zora deferred and EZT did approve. So I'm just curious, will this still be going forward in the format you just gave us because you've got funding from Blanford Blenheim and they turned it down. So I was just curious why that wasn't updated.
Thank you through the mayor to councillor Tate. Certainly, that funding envelope from the area municipalities will be sustained. It may not be in that specific breakdown that you see in front of you today. We're still waiting for the the final deliberate deliberations to be made by EZT and and Zora. So that will be confirmed later in the month.
Okay, so I just want to confirm then. So you're still pushing ahead even though Blanford Blenheim turned it down because the understanding from county council was that if one of them turned it down, we weren't going forward?
Yeah, I'm not so sure I agree with that comment, but I'll leave it at that.
Okay, I have a couple of other questions, specifically the finance model that you gave us. And I've asked this before, but I never got a straight answer. So the financials you have right now are incorrect because you've got Blanford Blenheim. But our staff went over the numbers and from the numbers that the county had provided, this new transit system will cost over three hundred and eighty seven dollars per rider trip. So I'm not sure how you're saying that it's financially feasible. That's in the first year, over a hundred and three dollars rider per by twenty twenty seven twenty seven. Woodstock transit costs approximately six dollars per rider. So I'm not understanding why you think that's economically sustainable. But I want the the reason I'm stating this is because thanks to Mayor Trevor Birx that you had to come forward. So hopefully the taxpayers understand what's going on with this. So my question is, you've got the financial projections show fare revenue ranging from twenty two thousand to sixty thousand over seven years with assumptions, numbers of riders and cost of fare. What are these numbers based on? Why the fifty percent increase in twenty twenty five? Just curious where you got that from?
Yes, through the mayor to councillor Tate, that would be a doubling in ridership.
Okay, so and then for your bus, you've got a hundred and twenty five K. Our small buses are two twenty five. Do you, did you get a quote already for the bus?
We've got a qualified bid of a hundred and four thousand dollars approximately.
And how many people would that seat?
In the presentation, it's up to twenty able bodied passengers or sixteen able bodied passengers and two wheelchair riders.
Okay, so and then I guess the main issue is just so councils aware, and I think I've voiced this a number of times. Count, upper tier does not have jurisdiction over transportation, as we're all aware. And it's interesting coming from your presentation today that you think you're going to take over even more of the county with transportation. So the reason that they're fun, they're wording it as a grant now is to try and get around that. But the taxpayers of Woodstock are not going to absorb this ridiculous amount of money, three hundred, over three hundred dollars per ride is ridiculous. And just so everybody's aware, this first came to council in July and we are asking to vote on this for October to go ahead. This is a brand new program. So just get your head wrapped around that, pushing this all through in this very, very short time. That's it for my questions.
Thank you. Councillor Lauter?
Thank you, Mayor Birch, and through to Mr. Simpson. I just want to get this straight. There's going to be one bus. And if I got this right, it's going to be an operational eight hours a day. So it, how would that get to, because going through and what I read, there the companies, all businesses open at different times of the day, some at six o'clock in the morning, some at ten and then close again at night. So how would this one bus satisfy all those businesses or even a majority of those businesses?
Thank you through the mayor to the councillor. Obviously, the service isn't going to be all things to everyone. It's impossible for one bus to accommodate all employers, as you can imagine. The challenge we face is it's very hard to really finalize commitments from employers until we've actually got a service to speak of and a defined route and schedule. So our intent would be, you know, on the hope that this initiative proceeds is we're then obviously in a position to go out and market and brand it with the the respective employers. And, you know, we would do our best to accommodate as many employers as possible within their start and stop ship times. There may also be the opportunity by certain employers to adjust start and stop times of a select number of their employees as well to help align with the timing of of this schedule. So it can work both ways. I'll be quite transparent in saying, you know, much like Woodstock transit, you're never going to be able to fully accommodate all employers and every type of rider.
Just one more question. And so if you, you would be doing that before you would be purchasing the bus or naming anyone to take over this service, would that all be done before? First of all, this has to get passed. If it does pass, and then you're going to go out to the businesses prior to ever purchasing the bus? Or how, and what stages would you be doing that?
Thank you through the mayor to the councillor. Obviously, before you could make any steps, that award to the preferred vendor would need to be executed. And then that would trigger the need for that vendor to start looking at validating the route schedule, the road alignment, and seeing how we can best accommodate the greatest number of users, including employers. So yes, that that award would trigger the procurement of the bus and and off you go in that service. Again, without the bus, without the the route to begin with, you've got nothing to really present to employers as certainty, right?
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Agioni?
Thank you, worship, through to Mr. Simpson. It's more of a comment, really. I've just I'm really hesitant, along with a few of the other councillors that voice their opinion, to put this on the Woodstock tax burden and the residents here. It does seem very excessive and I certainly have concerns about how quickly this seems to have been put together and I guess lack of you know, a true plan, I feel, in place of knowing exactly where it's going to go, when it's going to go with the respondents that you've mentioned. It looks like it got a very, very small amount of responses and even more so from businesses. I believe you said it was sixty one businesses and forty percent of them commented positively about this. So a very, very small percentage. And for this reason, I'm gonna have some troubles to fall along with it for financial reasons mostly.
Thank you. Now councillor Schattenberg?
My question to Mr. Simpson, I guess, is more just clarification. When the bus arrives in Woodstock, it stops at the hospital, Fanchow College, which I guess tells me the community complex, our actual bus depot downtown. It stops at the Greyhound Bus Station as well and the train station. Is that kind of the five proposed stops in Woodstock for for this bus?
Thank you through the mayor to the councillor. I think you might be looking at a different intercommunity bus system, perhaps Middlesex or Tilsonburgs. But the northern service I'm referring to would simply exchange at the Woodstock Transit Hub.
Thank you. Just to follow up on councillor Tate's question, again, with the gross cost per rider in the initial years over three hundred and eighty dollars per rider and when we reach peak capacity after the system's up and running and well adopted and reserves are healthy, still over a hundred dollars a ride on a gross cost. When we look at other transit systems and micro transit systems that people have initiated, they've moved to more of an on demand model like this route, such a large percentage of the respondents that requested this type of service are from areas that the bus won't actually travel down the road to. You've got it going M Road to Harrington and and this circular loop and it won't even hit the higher respondents. But back to the word sustainability that continues to be used and you yourself used in a press release with our local paper. How do you view almost three hundred and eighty dollars per ride and at the peak service still over a hundred dollars gross per ride as sustainable? When these area municipalities with their contribution would give out taxi vouchers or Lyft or Uber like many of the other small communities that want to have interconnectedness, they'd they'd actually have door to door service in a more timely manner for less money. So how does that equate to your model of sustainability?
Thank you, Mayor Birch. I'd be happy to walk through the calculations that you have been referring to to confirm what assumptions and numbers you're presenting. Without knowing how you've made those calculations, I can either confirm or deny your your cost estimate there per ride. So I will leave it at that. I can speak to the other end of the spectrum of service if you were to look at something other than a fixed flex schedule intercommunity bus transit route that's proposed here. And I'll draw your attention to the model that Wellington Counties head up and running for some time now. They've specifically looked at your door to door on demand service, looking at something like four different sedans being their fleet. So immediately they're faced with a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar capital cost for those four sedans. Then you have to hire drivers for those four cars as well as maintain O and M costs for those four cars. So right there, you can add another three hundred thousand dollars of annual operating costs. And at the end of the day, right now in the COVID world.
That's okay.
Your best, if I could finish, your best comparison there is perhaps one rider per car. So when you compare those two extremes, I do believe the model we have proposed is far more sustainable. Further, the Wellington model is not even eligible for for gas tax. Um, funding and and cost offsetting. So that would be my quick perspective on that comment.
Well, actually, I think uh we can go from one extreme to the other. But uh I guess you were asked the same question that uh one of our our neighbors to the south about the gross cost. Um, and I know you were unable to answer it at that point to them. I would have thought you would have been more prepared here for the citizens of Woodstock today. Um, so the calculation, it's not a very difficult calculation that uh Counselor Tate referred to. In your report, you have gross costs and you have total number of riders. Taking the riders and dividing by those expenses gives you the true cost. Now, I didn't uh necessarily asked about uh another extreme where people purchase sedans. I actually referred to, we have a lot of private uh taxi cab operators right here within the county of Oxford that take all the liability on themselves. And at a cost of over three hundred and eighty dollars per ride, or when you have peak ridership and it's still over a hundred dollars per ride. And the riders need to get to these pickup points in certain areas that you see on the map with the routes. Uh, the question was, why wouldn't it be more practical and more sustainable for those townships that are interested in having their community connected to just give out taxi vouchers? And then we don't have to hire a part-time staff person at the county to liaison and all of these other added expenditures. But I guess taking it from one extreme to the other, you can you can uh speak that way, but I think uh we'll move on. So Counselor Agioni?
Thank you, worship. Uh, actually, that was um along the same lines as you're talking about. Uh, Mr. Simpson, I'm just curious, was calculation, so when this concept came up, uh you came up with this concept, were you doing a comparison with uh true cost from local taxi cabs that could um go and pick up people, drop them off, or even the possibility of uh companies like Uber? Was that part of the conversation, the comparison? And I'm I'm really curious how uh that conversation would have gone when you're looking at three hundred dollars plus ridership costs.
Thank you, Mayor. Through the council, uh again, I don't necessarily condone that that cost estimate that continues to be presented. But I have reached out to a number of of taxi companies, and I'll give you a sample idea of a round trip from Tavistock to Woodstock of ninety dollars compared to a ten dollar uh bus fare.
Oh, sorry, you need to speak gross cost, so not a ten dollar bus fare, but the total cost to taxpayers for that one ride we're saying is more than a hundred and seven dollars when you reach peak uh in your initial startup. It's over three hundred and eighty dollars. Um, so in the initial time period, you'd actually be able to hire a limousine for less money.
Yeah, I'll I'll leave my comment at that. I don't necessarily agree with the uh.
I I'm sorry that you don't agree, and I guess that's why at county council you were asked to come out and and speak. And uh uh one of the things that you were asked to do was to give gross costs. Now, you did indicate that you you did give a revision to the three township of what the cost per individuals would be, and it would go up to about three dollars and change instead of the two dollars and change. But that still didn't give the gross cost per ride, and that was a clear point that was established. And I'm sorry that you chose to not do those calculations. It's very disappointing yet again. Further discussion of council? Seeing none, thank you very much. We'll have a resolution on that a little later. Our next delegation is for application for zone change for three or for seven ninety-three Devonshire Ave. And it's Wes and Longina Rozinski, and they will have a representative, Paul, uh speaking for them as uh uh he's a little more comfortable with his uh English. So welcome, Paul.
Uh, hello, council. Thank you very much for uh giving me another opportunity to chat with you guys. Um, after the meeting on on Tuesday and and chatting with some of the neighbors, it seems like I've become kind of a spokesperson for the neighborhood. Um, a lot of them, um, it's not that they uh don't care, but they just don't simply have the access. A lot of them are in their sixties, seventies, eighties, um, and they don't have a computer or a screen or what have you to to contact you guys. So um I appreciate the opportunity. Um, question that I wanted to mention, and uh it it kind of became apparent in the Tuesday meeting um that perhaps there's a little bit of confusion in terms of the driveway expansion. Um, it seemed like the council was under the impression that the driveway will be uh done post-approval or post as a as a secondary uh process. Um, I just wanted to clarify that this driveway has already been put in about two months ago. Um, and since you guys uh don't seem to be aware of it, I I'm wondering if this was done without a permit or or things like that. So um it again brought a lot of concern about the operability of the corporation that's uh pro- proposing uh to add a rental space in um in the the neighborhood there. So um I understand you guys are probably a little less sympathetic to the lower value or or more traffic, as I'm sure you hear about these things with every kind of rental proposal. But why is this different? Um, frankly, it's because it's Devonshire. Um, that's the busiest and largest residential street in Woodstock. Um, I don't think there's any longer street that has more um single detached houses on it in all of Woodstock. Uh, between Piddock and Dundas, there's probably about seventy percent of the residential housing in all of Woodstock. And Devonshire dissects that. So you can imagine most of the traffic in Woodstock at some point or another every day will be on that street. So we're we're chatting about minimums like um square footage or one parking spot. And I feel um housing or or projects that are going to be put onto this main street should have or to be held to a little bit higher uh standard. Um, in particular, the one parking spot is not enough. Um, there's no street parking in front of that house. And what ultimately is going to happen is nobody's going to park five houses down the road and walk up to this house. They're going to double park. And the double parking is going to uh mean that people are going to be parking on the sidewalk and and probably onto the boulevard, because the the street's not, or the driveway's not deep enough. Um, so it's not just traffic, it's going to affect pedestrians. If my elderly mom wants to take my four-year-old to Roth Park, she's going to literally have to walk out onto Devonshire to to go around these parked cars. Uh, there's a daycare about a block away, and they uh walk their kids um about ten AM. Every day, there's about twenty uh kids in a batch, all holding a a rope, and they walk from there to Bronson Park. Um, and again, if there's any cars parked there, they're now going to have to navigate around that. Um, there's also an adult learning center. Uh, there's also two elementary schools that are within walking distance. So all of these things will be affected. So I don't think bare minimum should apply i- in such a high-traffic area. Um, I think with the the decision, you guys are are going to be setting a bit of a precedent. There's also another applicant that's going to be coming in uh basically trying to do the same. Uh, I think we're a little more sympathetic to them. They're actually on a street parking. And the fellow, I think, actually lives in the house and is looking to uh help with some of the expenses. Whereas this is a corporation literally looking for more profit. Um, so we ask the council to look at the citizens that that have actually lived there. A lot of these people are older. Um, they spent their entire lives in Woodstock, raise kids here, work here, uh they shop here. Um, so if you guys do approve this, uh you're you're basically voting against all of these people that have spent their entire lives here i- in in the effort to increase profit uh and and corporate greed for the for the ba- lack of better word. Um, and this money isn't really going to funnel back into the city. So the city's not going to make any more money as a result of having an extra person, and the the property taxes are going to be consistent. If anything, um the local citizens could apply to actually get their taxes decreased because now they have multi-unit dwellings and and should there be another applicant? Or if my parents decide to move into apartment and and convert their house to additional housing. So all of these people are are now going to be not only disgruntled, they're going to have to live with all of uh the the council's decisions. So w- we can say that the the uh disadvantage to all the people is relatively small. A little bit of money out of their pockets for their house value dropping, a little bit more traffic on the overly trafficked in a pretty dangerous intersection area as it is. But the overall decision is, do we stand by the people that live here? Or do we allow another corporation to buy up um affordable housing in Woodstock to then turn them into rentals? And they're not just renting it to one family. They're now jam-packing these houses with as much people as possible uh and to try to maximize that profit. So we implore you guys to to stand by the citizens of Woodstock and and disapprove this application. Um, again, I thank you guys for for the time.
Thank you. Questions of council? Seeing none, thank you very much. We'll deal with that when we get to the planning item. Our next delegation is uh regarding uh seventy-five Brock Street and an application for zone change. And we have uh Alex and Barrett Stemler. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Birch and council members. Um, I'm Alex Somewhere, and this is my husband Barrett. Uh, we reside at seventy-three Brock beside seventy-five Brock Street. The property in question for zoning change. Uh, we recently purchased seventy-three Brock Street, and we moved in at the end of April after doing extensive renovation. Uh, we are deeply concerned by the proposed zoning change as it will directly affect our day-to-day lives during construction as well as afterwards. We have been informed by our realtor and real estate lawyer that it will devalue our property. I stay at home currently with our two children. Our daughter Molly is two years old, and our son Charlie is five. We are home all day, every day because of COVID. Charlie is involved in online learning for a couple hours a day, and I homeschool him for the rest of the day to the best of my abilities. He is a very smart boy, but I view that with loud machinery, constant construction, banging and loud noises coming from outside his classroom for months on end, that it will be very difficult for him to concentrate on his learning. He is very, very bright. Uh, he's already doing addition, subtraction, geography, sight words, and some sciences. Um, Molly sleeps in the afternoon, and I'm not sure how much rest she will be able to get with all the loud noise outside her bedroom. She's a light sleeper during the day. We also have two dogs who are always on high alert inside our fenced yard. With all the constant noise, we are concerned that our dogs will be disrupted, uh causing our kids to be disrupted constantly. And this will make it hard for our son to learn and our daughter to sleep. Uh, after the proposed construction is complete, a three-story building will completely block our only view of our kitchen and large dining room windows. Currently, the home beside us has a nice green space in the backyard, and it's quite a pleasant view. We have, we can currently see the sky and trees change color, but we will no longer be able to if there is a massive three-story, four-unit building blocking it. This proposed fourplex building will bring heavier traffic to our relatively quiet street. It will also take away the privacy of our backyard where our kids spend the majority of their time when they're not learning or sleeping. The proposed building could do four units, a direct view not only into our home, but into our backyard as well. Uh, when we purchased this home, we were happy to see that there was a single-family home uh beside it. And at that time inhabited by a nice family as well. Uh, this home is our biggest investment, and we have put a lot of time and money into refinishing it. We were going to have the outside repainted and refinished um our front and our front porch before moving in. But unfortunately, when we moved in to the house, the furnace needed to be replaced. This hidden expense was not within our budget and set us back to next year for refinishing the exterior. We have sent emails from both our realtor and our real estate lawyer, who have both advised us that the building of a fourplex will devalue our home. We basically have everything tied up in this house, and we bought this house before the pandemic. Uh, w- we are currently living in unprecedented times. My children and I have nowhere to go during the day to avoid the disruption of construction beside us. We will essentially be trapped in a construction zone for an extended period of time. And this is not going to allow us to have a comfortable, healthy, stress-free living and learning environment. And I don't want to feel like my family is being violated. The building of this complex would make it very hard for us and our children to live our day-to-day lives in peace while we are trapped at home. Once finished, it will eliminate any light from our living space. It will take all our privacy, and to top it all up, it will then take money out of our pocket. So we hope that you will consider our family. Um, Barrett has something to say.
Yeah, I just uh wanted to touch on some points my wife's made uh in her letter here. Uh, we have provided some photographs of uh the view from our window, which actually we're sitting in front of the window where we're at now. Um, currently, in the background here, we've got a nice little house. It's a one and a half stories. So this is our dining room view. As you can see, a nice sky. We've got trees. Um, look this way. If this building goes up, that's just going to be building and windows. We will have no green space. Um. We're basically, we're basically going to lose what was appealing to this house when we were looking for a house. Um, we did pass up on other houses that had um large buildings near them or uh directly beside them. And like my uh wife said, um, her and the kids are home all day because of this pandemic. Um, you know, our son is doing very well with being uh home homeschooled. And uh the applicant had confirmed that springtime construction was within their plans, and it would be during the day. So it's going to disrupt our lives on a day-to-day basis. It will add stress to our lives. And according to our realtor and our real estate lawyer, it will devalue our property. Uh, not only that, um, we're going to lose this green space. We're going to lose the privacy. And uh after the meeting on Tuesday that uh my wife read this letter as well, um, the neighbor on the other side of uh seventy-five, but I guess it would be seventy-seven uh came and talked to us uh because they had missed out on the meeting. They didn't realize what day it was, I guess. Um, but uh they had similar concerns because they are frequently out in their backyard, and we see them out almost every day in the summertime. And essentially, it's going to put where the backyard is now next to us will be a parking lot beside a giant building. Um. Sorry, lost my point of thought here. Uh, yeah, anyways, um, this is going to increase traffic as well. Um, it's a fairly family-friendly neighborhood. Um, that's part of the reason we bought here. Uh, across the street, there are some fourplex buildings. They're smaller buildings. Uh, and there is one, I think, four-story older-style building. It's a very nice building condom uh condominiums. Uh, but on our side of the street, there are no uh multiplex, multi-unit dwellings. It's all single-family homes, uh which was appealing to us when we bought this place as well. Um, and I can understand the applicant's um prerogative for maximizing profit on of real estate within the city. You know, we we're looking to save our investment as well. Uh, but we kind of feel that this is undermining, you know, community and even environmental values because we're eliminating green space to add, you know, whether it's a nice-looking building or not. Um, you're still, we're still going to lose that green space and that privacy. And there's not to mention, there is a a very large maple tree in our backyard that will um also be affected by the building of this uh large fourplex building. It's uh, it looks to me, I can't say exactly where the building will lay, but some limbs will definitely have to be taken off. And I'm not sure how close construction will have to be to the property line because it's roughly one and a half meters, I believe, to the building. So the, I'm not sure how the root system of that tree may react to construction directly beside it because it's such close proximity. Um, all that being said, um, we hope you can consider uh what we've put before you and and our concerns and put take our family's uh well-being into consideration when making your decision.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us. Thank you. Questions of council? Seeing none, thank you very much. We'll deal with this when we get to the planning matter. And uh just by uh either a nodding of heads or a show of hands, we have two more delegations, uh both dealing with seventy-five Brock. And uh with council's permission, I would like to allow Laura Stewart to go first. Uh, and then that way we'll finish off with the uh proponent for the property. Would that be okay with council? All right, so we will proceed with uh uh seven F. So Laura Stewart regarding seventy-five Brock Street. Thank you very much for joining us. I know uh you were concerned about the deadline, and I just want to again extend thank you to uh city staff for uh getting you on the agenda as uh as you are here today. Thank you.
Me too. Thank you. Um, so good afternoon, everyone. My name's Laura Stewart, um, and I live at eighty-five Brock Street. So uh to the south of the uh property in question. Uh, so today, um, me and my partner, who lives with me, Nathan Nathan Paeson, and our landlord have put together some concerns I just want to um speak about. So I'm going to read this, so it's going to look. Um, so I would like to address that the changes being applied for are not small allowance. So I would like to address that the changes being applied for are not small allowances. Thirty-seven percent reduction in the required lot frontage, twenty-five percent reduction in lot area, and a fifty percent reduction in the interior side yard width. These are not small allowances and they give the appearance of trying to squeeze a building onto a lot that is too small for the proposed use. I understand the importance of developing properties in town with the long-term goal of saving farmland for farm use and not for residential development. However, I don't think that redevelopment should come at the detriment of the existing community surrounding the property. There has to be a limit to the concessions that can be given to developers in the name of following the mandate to promote development and infilling. These are not small concessions that are being requested and it could create dangerous precedent for future applications. I would also like to point out that this is not an empty lot. It is a good-sized lot with a livable, single-family home on it. There's not, I don't know, I guess I feel there isn't a necessity to develop their land as if it was an empty lot or if the home was condemned. Regarding the request to decrease the interior side yard width from three meters to a meter and a half. The intended side yard width of one meter would place the driveway four-point-five meters away from my house and where our bedroom is. So I would essentially have a driveway which is being, well, used obviously by four tenants proposed right next to where I'm sleeping, which to me is going to be very disruptive and a large concern for us. Not only during construction, but after when construction is complete. It's not ideal, I guess I would say. I'm also concerned about the parking for the intended property. The application shows one parking spot for each unit, which as I understand it, is what's required for this type of building. However, it does indicate that street parking will be required for visitor parking or if a tenant has one or more vehicle, vehicles. So if there's two people, they both have vehicles, which it seems like a really nice building. It's more than likely there's more than one person living in there and they both have cars. So although Brock Street does have parking on the east side of the street, it is very limited as Purina employees tend to take up quite a few of those spots. Elgin, which is the side street, is a one-way street and there's not room for parking at all. It's already difficult to find parking when we need it for current residents. And these units relying on street parking is going to put an additional pressure on an already limited parking situation. Let's see what else we got here. I'd also like to make note that a three-and-a-half-story building on this property will result in windows and balconies overlooking what are currently private and secluded backyards for the six surrounding properties. We have moved to this area for a reason. It's quiet. It's not technically a through street. So there isn't a lot of traffic and we liked that the backyards had privacy. And obviously to have that taken away, like Barrett and Alex said, we are in our backyards almost every day. We got all the gardens. And that would be kind of upsetting for us because that's one of the main reasons we love our home. Another item I wanted to address is snow removal or I guess snow storage, I guess. With the building occupying the majority of the lot, which is shown on the overhead drawing that's in the application, there's not really a lot of room for snow to be put. There's a small area on the front lawn, but we kind of went out and looked. It's not a big area. And our lawn is generally covered by snow several feet high. It's, we don't feel it's going to be sufficient. So that's an issue we're slightly worried about because we also have drainage issues because seventy-five Brock Street is six to eight feet elevated from our property. And to go along with that, as I mentioned, there is the elevation difference. And there are already drainage issues. So with a large portion of seventy-five Brock intending to be paved and what can, what we can only assume to be a large retaining wall and fence, et cetera. We're kind of concerned whether the applicant has made appropriate provisions for drainage and a retaining wall that will be required to keep our property safe, but also you know, to keep the property value and yeah, safety will do it. Overall, we don't feel the zoning changes are in the neighborhood's best interest and if anything will be a detriment to properties. So thank you for giving me a chance to voice my concerns on behalf of myself, my partner and our, the property owner Benjamin Greenwood. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of council? Seeing none. Oh, councillor Acioni?
Thank you, your worship. More of a general statement to Ms. Stewart and the Stemler family and everybody, just as a thank you very much for coming forward. I know it's always a little daunting to come on city council and speak and let your opinions known. So we certainly appreciate that and hearing from neighborhoods. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And so we'll deal with that when we get to the planning applications. And so our last delegation is Daryl Benbow regarding seventy-five Brock Street. Welcome.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, so to introduce myself, Daryl Benbow, I'm the property owner. We live, my wife and I are the owners. We live just north of Anker Kip on Townshire Road nine. So we are local in the community. The, just wanted to address some of the concerns that were brought to Tuesday's, concerns from neighbors that were brought to our attention on Tuesday's meeting as well as, and you know, really just provide some clarity around a, on some of the points they made and even myself that I made as well. So first one, just being around the privacy. I didn't mention, but we'd be looking to like really just put a privacy fence around the whole, the whole building. There was one, some concerns with parking in the back that we would be looking at, you know, putting to, you know, the maximum restricted height that we can have a fence around the whole property. If you've been by the property, there's, the fences are in pretty bad shape right now. So that would be an improvement to, yeah, I guess to the neighboring yards as well from that perspective. There were some questions just in regards to the tree removal. It's in our best interest to keep any trees where, where, where they are. You know, in the event that we do have to, whether remove a limb or remove any trees and we've taken pretty consideration into the trees within the design. We'd be looking to, A, like replace if we had to. And I think just part of the process that Andrea had mentioned, the city planner in Tuesday's meeting too, that we would have to go through site plan approval, which requires professional landscape design, which would likely, you know, include, we have to conform to amount of green space as well as likely include some planting trees in that perspective. And just from a, the concerns around the balconies, that was another point. There was, yeah, there, there, again, we do, we do the balconies just to provide, you know, we believe we should be providing amenity space for the tenants that are in there. So the balconies would provide that. We've tried to, so we have two facing the front of the street that you can see on the elevations. The backyard, there's none facing to the backyard faces to the east. And there's no balconies off the backyard as well as the north property for there's, there's none in the north. There is one in the south, which would be more the attic unit or the top unit from that perspective that, that faces. And that is on, one thing we took into consideration is it is, you know, there's two levels to this building right now. You can call it one and a half story. But when you are in the second story of the building right now, if we were to walk in and go to the second floor, we can already see the, you know, you can see the backyard like from a, we are downhill from the south. We're on the uphill on the north and the south property is downhill. So no, even, even the size of the building that is there now, there is a, you know, we would be looking downward from that perspective. I want to address just, you know, yeah, we're looking at two-story. We are adding a third story, which is in the height restrictions. We're not, we're not going against any height restrictions that are in the proposed zoning that it currently is. Just looking at my notes here after, just trying to make sure I've covered all these points. So the building, you know, we've had their contract to go through. We've done this. My, my wife and I are, we've done restoration of buildings, old buildings. And you know, really that's what we tried to, you know, they certainly can take into consideration when looking at this. As far as the building condition goes right now, A, it's not rentable. Like it's not to the type of individuals we would, we would be looking to rent to. We do like to, you know, historically in our properties, rent to, you know, single fam, like, you know, individuals or couples, not, not large families. Just, you know, from a landlord, we find it, you know, just a little easier to manage. But also I think it's worth noting that like regardless of what we're doing with this property, like between the foundation of the property, the structural damage that has, and I should note, and we didn't know this at the time, it wasn't provided with our real estate agent, but our, when, when looking, looking at financing, it was uncovered that this building wasn't grow up ten, fifteen years ago. And it looks like the, the owners over the years have taken, you know, tried to restore that, but just the fact that we know that now is something we'd probably be looking to reconstruct this regardless whether it was a four-plex or, you know, even a single family. It is noted that, yeah, the bill, this area is in a C-three entrepreneurial district zone. There is a, you know, which allows for medium-density housing. So the city is Woodstock. It's part of their plan for this area. And that was one thing that we did take into consideration when looking at this property and getting guidance from the planners on just the type of properties we should be looking at. And that's the, you know, we certainly took that into consideration when not going out. We used to live just north on between Parrott and Tatum Boulevard. And, you know, I can see not having residential construction up in those neighborhoods, but this is in the downtown core. And the idea of that areas, from what I understand is, you know, to bring individuals, improve the downtown core. After speaking with also Brad Hammond, who is the, you know, he's part of the downtown improvement program. So I guess his title, I think, Business Development Officer. But I think it's just worth noting that this is part of the community improvement program. For those of you who are not familiar with that, it's just basically it's to assist in the revitalization and enhancement of the downtown area through increased investment by business, property owners and investors into the city core. So really just, it's a, you know, it's a program that's out there for incentive for business owners and, and for new development there, to be honest, there wasn't a lot of incentives. More so, you know, looking at development charges are way from that perspective. My, you know, I, I, being a multifamily unit, my property taxes are going to go up, but there is a freeze that there, that there's an incentive for investors to look to, intentioned by the downtown core. But, you know, ultimately, you know, from, from a taxpayer perspective and from my, my perspective, the taxes will be going up after construction. The, you know, I think from, you know, it was mentioned that, that we are in an area that is this side of the street being the east side of Brock Street doesn't have multi-unit families on the, on the west side of the street. There is four, four-plexes along with a thirteen unit on Brock and Simcoe. Again, I, you know, I'm mindful of that. And I think if I look at the current condition of this house and looking at the, what we're proposing, really looking not like industrial or commercial and more so to keeping to the historical theme and working with city planner Andrea on the look and trying to keep with the, I don't know the exact terminology, but really this is the historical, we have to conform the historical guidelines for the look of the property. If anything, I, I feel like we're going to be adding some value to that and hopefully to the neighboring properties from, from, from that point. The, I think just to make note that, so, you know, I would say my wife and I are, we, you know, we do have other investment properties. We're not a corporation. We own these personally. Then just make a note like, so for example, six-plex, we just rebid allies on the north side of Dundas. Just to kind of an overview, they're, you know, for the most part, they're one and two-bedroom units. We have all young professionals mainly into like single individuals or couples. And after, you know, for years renting to families and, you know, we found just renting to individuals a lot, I would say easier to manage, you know, we're by the property on a day-to-day basis. We do, you know, we like to, you know, we take pride and look after him from that, from that view. So, you know, I think that's just worth noting that this isn't the first time we've done this and we'd be looking at one or two-bedroom. We're still working on a design, but really they're not going to be large units and, you know, really we're just trying to, ultimately we'd have four individuals living there. I grew up with a family of six. We had four cars in our driveway and I think if I built a single family there and within the height restrictions, you know, I could do that as well. Providing, you know, obviously permanent approval. The, and just to, just to make some notes just around, you know, I think the comments from the last, the last neighbor that wasn't part of the Tuesday meeting. And, you know, appreciate the comments there and I can certainly respect that. Current, current driveway, yeah, we'd be moving the driveway the other side of the property, four-point-five meters approximately from their, from their windows. And I think we did the math on the current driveway now. They're all pretty small lots up in that area. So, you know, where the drive, the driveways on the north or the south, we are, you know, we're going to be close to close to the property lines of, of the other buildings. The, the current driveway can fit, you know, easily three cars right now. So, you know, there's not going to be additional, you know, I would think not the much extra volume there. And again, like I mentioned on the points, you know, whether we had a single family with a three-bedroom, which it currently is, you know, you could theoretically have three, four people in, in that, with, with vehicles. Lastly, just a, you know, the snow removal, our, you know, our existing building we have now north that would have, you know, it's got mainly concrete. It is, we've had no problems with snow removal. We have a professional local landscaper, some removal company that comes in and does that. And we've had pretty good success even after last winter, the amount of snow we had, no problems there. The, we, I would say that we, from stormwater management, I would say, you know, the, the property is pretty, again, like I said, we, we went in there, weeds are probably higher than me. We kind of all cut down, cleaned out. But yeah, there will be extra concrete through the stormwater. We figured a stormwater management plan when we go through site plan approval that we have to hire a local engineering company to look at all the addressing the stormwater management as well. So those are just a few of the points I did want to make or plan to provide some clarity and I appreciate, appreciate the time.
All right. Thank you very much. I let you go a little over time there, but questions of council? Seeing none. Oh, councillor Talbot, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, through Mr. Benbow. Just curious, when you purchased this property, did you look at any other alternatives in a building the three stories? Did you look at anything two stories? To, to fitting, because I mean, I was listening to your comments and you said the style you're trying to fit into the neighborhood. Well, I was down there a couple of times and you have, as was said earlier, you have a one-and-a-half-story on the corner and then and of course you have the hill. I'm just wondering if you looked and thought, well, it's going to stick out quite a bit, even though the style might fit in, but as far as the heights of the neighboring buildings, what would a two-story look like in there better? Would it, would it fit the neighborhood better? As well as with a similar design?
Certainly, yeah. And we just, yeah, we discussed that with my architect and the source through the mayor to the councillor. We discussed that with the architect, just looking at the, you know, we're not looking at a very large, like it's pretty thin building. So we'd be, we'd still be looking to move parking to the back. So to, when looking at the parking situation, we'd be still moving it. We still have to look at having a backspace used. And then as far as the, the building design, so then we were looking to, you know, ultimately we'll be looking to maximize the lot based on, well, the building has to be in a same footprint and we're still going to be looking at some of the what it was, basically provisions, we'd have to look for setbacks. So we'd still be up against the same footprint of the building. So then it's just a matter of, so to address your height with the story, that would be, you know, looking at the height restriction in that area and that guideline, you know, we tried to see what we could fit without going over the any height restrictions, but I would say as far as your comments around, you know, could we look at two units or three units? Certainly considered, but when it came down to like looking at, you know, the building size, it doesn't get us away from the parking, which is one thing that we really were trying to strategically keep in mind when having one unit per parking spot and two, having, you know, just maximizing the, the building for, I guess, ultimately, you know, as from the, from the area being zone C-three and the, trying to bring people to the downtown core, having, having the four units and especially across the street, like the four, four-plexes that were in there certainly conform to the current zoning.
I think if I can continue, your worship, I understand that the building across the street, the, the larger one was a school at one time, a public school. It was Broadway Public School. But I just noticed the other new development on the street to the west. It's, they've kept it fairly minimal. Again, using the slope, but it's only two stories. And how they're done, I'm just thinking, like I said, it's, you're sticking a three-story building in between two lower buildings. So it's going to stand out even though that it might be architecturally, you know, to fit into the neighborhood, but not necessarily the size. But that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none. Thank you very much and we'll deal with that when we get to the planning reports. Our next item on the agenda is the application for zone change at Masters Drive. Our next item on the agenda is the application for zone change at Masters Drive for oh, here we go, consideration of delegation, actually. So we will have, we need two different ones here, the rest will be dealt with under planning. So first one for the request to name a street for Jack Wilford, councillor Accioni.
Yes, move by myself, the Woodstock City Council add the name Jack Wilford to the list of possible street names under the local history category.
Thank you, and seconded by councillor Talbot. Discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. And the next one is for the presentation from David Simpson for the North Transit Route, councillor Tate.
I'll make the motion and I'll ask for a recorded vote.
Thank you.
Motion, Woodstock City Council advise County Council that the Municipal Act two thousand and one SO two thousand and one twenty-five prevents Oxford County from partnering in proposed rural based North Oxford intercommunity transit system. And further that Woodstock City Council opposes Oxford County's financial support of the proposed North Oxford intercommunity transit system till such time as the spheres of jurisdiction as provided in Municipal Act authorize such involvement and further that Woodstock City Council direct staff to retain legal counsel to obtain jurisdictional review of any and all bylaws passed by Oxford County Council in support of the proposed North Oxford intercommunity transit system.
Thank you. And the seconder, councillor Fraser, and discussion. Councillor Tate.
Just, just short, because I think we've had a lot of discussion on it at county and I've made a couple of comments at city, but I think this goes to the whole first issue of it is not their jurisdiction, as you've heard from the presentation that they plan on even expanding it and at the expense of our taxpayers, which is completely unacceptable. And as councillor Fraser pointed out, the amount we are paying proportionately is not something that's acceptable.
Thank you, and I'll hand it over, further discussion? Okay, I'll hand it over to the clerk.
Thank you, your worship. So you heard the motion on the floor, councillor Tate?
Uh, yes.
Councillor Talbot?
No.
Councillor Accioni? I'm sorry, councillor Accioni, you're on mute.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I just want to verify here. Am I, am I saying yes or no to be in favor of the proposal or what councillor Tate is proposing to? It is what councillor Tate's proposing.
Yeah, so, so just for councillor's information, I could reiterate the motion, if you'd like councillor Accioni, so that's Woodstock City Council advise County Council that the Municipal Act two thousand and one SO two thousand and one C twenty-five prevents Oxford County from gathering in the, pardon me, partnering in the proposed rural based North Oxford intercommunity transit system. And further that Woodstock City Council opposes Oxford County's financial support of the proposed North Oxford intercommunity transit system and still until such time that the spheres of jurisdictions as provided in the Municipal Act authorize such involvement. And further that Woodstock City Council direct staff to retain legal counsel to obtain judicial review of any and all bylaws passed by Oxford County Council in support of the proposed North Oxford intercommunity transit system.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. And Mayor Birch?
Yes.
Councillor Fraser?
Yes.
Councillor Lawter?
Yes.
And councillor Schattenberg?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries six to one.
Thank you very much. And we'll make sure that we send a copy of that along to Oxford County Council and encourage the media to continue to show some of these true cost proposals to the public. So thank you everyone for that. And now we'll move along to the planning applications. So our first one is for the zone change at Masters Drive for the villages of Sally Creek. So looking for a mover and a seconder to get that one on the floor. So councillor Accioni, seconded by councillor Stadenberg. Go ahead councillor.
Okay, thank you. The wood, a move by myself, the Woodstock City Council approve the recommended zoning bylaw amendment file Z N eight dash two zero dash fourteen for lands comprising part lot five concession eleven in the city of Woodstock. Whereby the lands are proposed to be rezoned from special plan unit development zone P U D dash one to special active use open space zone O S two dash six to allow lands to be used for parkland purposes. And further that any comments received from the public were reviewed and considered before the decision was made in relation to this planning matter.
Thank you. And Ms. Hashler, welcome.
Thank you. So the first application today is an application for a zone change and the applicant is proposing to rezone lands that are actually going to be parkland, that's going to be transferred to the city of Woodstock. Which is a condition of draft approval of a larger subdivision that is the villages of Sally Creek, which was approved back in two thousand and one. And basically what's, what's occurring is the applicant is transferring this larger parcel, which is a woodlot and its own O S one, it'll remain in O S one, which is a passive use zone. And they will also be transferring this parcel, which is the subject parcel, subject to the zone change today. And what they're looking to do is rezone the lands from a residential zone, which is the, the planned unit development zone to an active use open space zone. And this is occurring through a registration of, of a larger phase, which is phase six two. Leave, I have a there we go. So that's the larger plan. And just for council's information, upon staff review, we realize that this smaller parcel is one thousand nine hundred and eighty square meters, whereas the minimum lot area for an O S two zone is two thousand square meters. So through this own change, we would be recommending that a site specific zone be applied to this parcel. And it would be an O S two dash six, and that would be to recognize the reduced lot area. In our opinion, we feel that the reduced lot area is satisfactory as it's going to be added to a much larger parcel. Which in total would be five point one acres. And then just to touch on some questions that were asked on Tuesday night, I believe it was councillor Lawter that asked the questions. The question was, is the woodlot going to be part of the trail system, the city trail system? And the answer, I checked with the parks department. And that is not the case because it's not connected to a large, the larger trail network for the city. And then the smaller parcel will be used for active recreational uses and the city parks department is proposing to put playground on the, on the parcel. And based on the size, that'll be about all that will fit on that property. Staff are satisfied with this proposal. We feel that it'll provide a, a space for leisure activities in a residential neighborhood. It'll be a community focal point. And it's, it's in keeping with the provincial policy statement as well as the official plan and, and based on that, we'd recommend the city council approve this application.
Thank you very much. Discussion. Questions of council? Seeing none. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And our next one on the agenda is for the application for zone change for seven ninety-three Devonshire Ave. Looking for a mover and a second, it'll be moved by councillor Fraser and seconded by
Your worship, I'd like to make an amendment to the, to the recommendation.
Okay.
So, you know, maybe I, I'll, I'll give you my recommendation and see if somebody seconds it.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay. Thank you, your worship. That was actually a council denied the application for lands described as lot forty-two, plan one zero eight seven, the city was start to be zone from subject property from residential zone one, R one to special residential zone two. R two dash thirty-six. This is not consistent with the residential area of the property's location. And, and, and I, not in an intensified required area.
Thank you. And looking for a second or councillor Accioni? And I think what we should do is we'll just have council discussion first and see if it's needed to have discussion from our, our planner. So discussion of council. And councillor, we'll start with councillor Fraser, then councillor Tate.
Looking at that residential area and doesn't fit in to that, that street area, that whole area of Devonshire, Gladstone, Leinster. It, the proposal just doesn't make sense to me and it's not a necessary of, of an area that needs to be intensified. So that's why I think it should be denied.
Thank you. And councillor Tate?
Yes, I agree with, through the chair, I agree with councillor Fraser. I think we're going down a slippery slope with this and completely agree. It's a R one residential neighborhood and that's the way I think it should stay.
Thank you. Further discussion councillor, we'll go councillor Lawter first, then councillor Accioni.
Thank you. I agree with councillor Fraser on this. That was purchased, purchased recently as a single dwelling home and now they're going to be renting this out. And they're changing it to a two unit or this is what's happening and people are coming in and I think that this, as has been said, we're going down a slippery slope and the R one, we're losing our, our one designations to our, our two or, or any other designation. So I, I totally agree with the motion on the floor.
Thank you. Councillor Accioni?
Thank you, your worship. I'm just thankful for councillor Fraser's change of wording there, of course. Again, I too agree with councillor Lawter, that's not denying, we need more rentals and everything else. I, I know we need affordable housing and everything, but I think we've got to be careful where we put these and try to keep some state of the city of Woodstock before we, I don't want to become a Toronto or even a London or a Kitchener necessarily, if we can prevent that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, so you've heard the motion. So this would be to deny the application. All those in favor of denial? And unanimous. Thank you very much. And no need for Ms. Hashler on that report at this point then. And our next one is for seventy-five Brock Street. Councillor Tate?
Yes, I'll do the motion that Woodstock City Council deny the application for lands described as part lots thirteen and fourteen, plan fifty-two in the city of Woodstock to rezone the subject lanes, land, sorry, from C three to special zone C three dash ten to include a number of special provisions to facilitate the development of a fourplex as the application represents an overdevelopment of the property and is not in keeping with the surrounding properties. And further that any comments received from the public were reviewed and considered before the decision was made in relation to this planning matter.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Talbot and I think again, based on the show of hands, we may be able to dispense with Ms. Hashler's report at this point. So discussion councillor Tate?
Yeah, I just want to comment, I saw the design, it's a, you know, it's a great design. I understand this, but these aren't small exemptions he was asking for. So the width, he's asking for half, which is required. This is another instance, I think we allow it for this one area, we have to allow it for everybody. And it doesn't matter where it is, like, we have these provisions in place for a reason and I think we should stick to them. Thanks.
Thank you. Further discussion councillor Accioni?
And just like councillor Tate mentioned, it, it's no small feat. Again, I know we need housing and everything else and I hate to be kind of turning them down when we need it. But again, we still got to keep the character of the city of Woodstock and the neighborhoods. If this did come forward with a proposal of a duplex or maybe a triplex that fit in better with the neighborhood, I, I think I'd be more apt to approve it. It's just the, the fourplex and too big and, and just not, I guess, the right side of the street in this case. Keeping with the neighborhood.
Thank you. Further discussion councillor Lawter?
Thank you. I, I certainly agree with the motion. I believe that enhancement in the downtown area is something we certainly do want, but not to the detriment of other people's living in, in the area, taking away from the their enjoyment of their properties. And as councillor Accioni has said, come back with maybe something that's smaller, two units or something else would be more favorable in, and not that height. I, I just going down the street and seeing that the home at eighty-five Brock Street is so much lower and then to have a three story building up, it just wouldn't look right there. So thank you for putting that motion forward councillor Tate.
Thank you councillor Fraser.
Thank you, your worship. But councillor Talbot pointed out, and looking at that streetscape, there's been some recent new builds there and they, they certainly, the new builds fit right into the other older houses. In fact, I think the one house on that street is probably the oldest house in Woodstock. But, and then the school, broad, old, well, Broadway School that was converted into condos is at the bottom of the hill. So it doesn't tower over anybody because of the, of the angle of the street downwards. So I think this is appropriate that, or what was being proposed is inappropriate for that neighborhood.
Thank you. Further discussion? You've heard the motion. So again, this would be to deny the change. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. Thank you. And we'll make sure that we don't leave Andrea off without one more thing. So this would be for the approval of the extension for Sally Creek. Moved by councillor Talbot and a second there will be councillor Fraser. Go ahead councillor Talbot.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council advises Oxford County that the city supports a two-year extension to the draft approval of the villages of Sally Creek subdivision thirty-two T zero 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 one for lands described as part of lots three, four and five concession eleven East Zora in the city of Woodstock to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. As well as the proposed amendments to the existing conditions of draft approval as set out in report number twenty twenty two seventy-one.
Thank you. Ms. Hashler, welcome.
Thank you. So the final application today, as indicated by councillor Talbot, is for a draft approval extension. Oh, and I'm sorry, I forgot to share my screen here. Okay, so as you can see, these are the lands that are still subject to the draft approval extension. This is part of the villages of Sally Creek, just like the, the first application that council considered today. In this case, the lands were draft approved back in two thousand and one for mostly residential purposes. As council may recall, there have been several draft approval extensions over the years. It's a, a large parcel and it's taken years for them to develop the lands. The applicant is requesting that council give them an extension for another two years. We issued an internal temporary extension because we received the application in August and we needed more time to review the proposal. So we temporarily extended it to December thirty-first, twenty twenty. And the applicant is, is requesting to extend it to September twenty twenty-two. Council will see in our recommendations, seeing as we already gave a temporary approval to December thirty-first, twenty twenty that we're recommending that the extension be to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. The one thing that is different than what council generally sees with the draft approval extensions is simply that the city engineering and parks departments have requested that conditions, two conditions be deleted and that they be replaced. And basically they are with respect to parkland dedication. And so the two conditions that are being deleted are with respect to specific blocks being dedicated and seeing as once phase six two is with respect to specific blocks being dedicated and seeing as once phase six-two is is registered, which is what we spoke about earlier, then the parkland has all been dedicated for the entire plan of subdivision. And so those conditions can be removed. And then beyond that, the Parks Department has asked that that the new condition also state that there would be no cashingly required to be paid to the owner for any sort of overdedication of parkland. So we would recommend that this application or the extension be extended further to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and then also that those conditions be removed and be replaced with the one that's been suggested.
Thank you. Questions of council? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. Next up on the agenda, we have consideration of correspondence and we have correspondence from Debbie France regarding illicit cannabis grow operations. Councillor Fraser and it'll be.
Thank you worship. I'd like to propose the same resolution that the township plan for Blenheim has passed. Whereas the unlicensed and non-monitored cannabis grow operations have increasingly become a problem for communities in Ontario as well as across the country. And whereas these operations are allowed to establish with little or no consultation with local community municipalities are often only made aware of their existence after conflicts arise with neighboring and landowners. And whereas loopholes and existing federal legislation allows these large-scale grow ops to establish and operate without any of the regulations or protocols that licensed monitored operations need to adhere to. And now therefore be resolved that Woodstock City Council urges the federal government to amend the legislation under which the facilities operate to ensure the safety and rights of local communities in which they are situated are respected. And further that this resolution be forwarded to the federal minister of health and federal minister of justice and attorney general, federal minister of public safety and emergency preparedness, Oxford MP Dave McKenzie, Oxford MPP Ernie Hardman, and the association of municipalities and material.
Thank you. And seconded by councillor Talbot. Discussion? Councillor Fraser?
Marijuana growing is increasing, is so is marijuana sales increasing? And licensed outlets, which we see starting to blossom in our city. So I think we as municipal councils need to take some steps to ensure that we're made aware of all these. So this is outdoor growing mostly related, but we do have green space where it could happen. And so I think it's a worthwhile effort to put something forward to so the municipalities are respected by the licensing agencies that these allow these things to happen.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. So next up, we have the application for tax relief. And this is that regular annual one for some of the properties where something's happened on the property, such as a fire or business change. And we'll go move by councillor Lauder, seconded by councillor Schattenberg.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council direct the treasurer to cancel, reduce, or refund the taxes levied in twenty twenty as detailed in the reports.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. Next on the agenda, we have the statement of revenue and expenditures and this is for the period ending September thirtieth. And looking for a mover and a seconder, we'll go move by councillor Acioli, seconded by councillor Lauder. Thank you.
Move by myself that Woodstock City Council received the statement of revenue and expenditure and the statement of capital expenditures for the period ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty is information.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And the next one, we're back to street naming again. We've had quite a few of these and of course this one here is no cost to the city to fix. We haven't installed a street name yet and we noticed a spelling error. So McKay instead of Mackay or Mackay. So this would change it from M C K A Y to M A C K A Y. And again, this is in the Havlot Corner subdivision. So we'll go move by councillor Schadenberg and a seconder will be we'll go councillor Acioli. Thank you.
It says, show me the motion of the Woodstock City Council rename McKay Drive, M small c, large K A Y, drive to McKay Drive, M A C, large K A Y, drive, essentially adding an A after the letter M. As the mayor mentioned, is the spelling correction. And McKay, by the way, was a former mayor of the city of Woodstock in this, in this case, for under historic names that he's get the streets being named after.
That's right.
Not a current mayor of a township north of us.
That's right. And if you use the correct Scottish or I think even the Gaelic from the Welsh, it would be pronounced Mackay. But of course, we would pronounce it McKay. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up is the annual tour of lights. And we're going to need to do things a little different this year. So we'll go move by councillor Lauder and seconded by councillor Tate.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council approves the real allocation of funds to offer a virtual tour of lights and provide associated maps.
Thank you. And discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And we'll make sure that we get lots of information out through all of the media channels and the city website and of course, here at our location. And this virtual tour will provide a great opportunity to continue this tradition and we'll also have opportunity to make those needed contributions to some of the charities that have grown to rely on the funds that come from the annual tour of lights. But most importantly, you'll be able to go within your social bubble and your loved ones and either follow the map route out there in a private vehicle or to watch a wonderful video that will be put together and stay warm in your residence while you do that. So we'll keep everybody informed as more information comes. Next up is the park naming and this is the one that people who tuned into the last meeting heard about the great environmentalists that had come to our community and councillor Talbot and we'll go with a seconder will be councillor Acioli. Thank you.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council approved the naming of the new park on Petullo Avenue as Herbert Mountains Park.
Thank you. Discussion? Councillor Schadenberg?
Yes, you're married to our director of parks and recreation, Brian Connors. I know he's a part of our meeting this afternoon. Just an opportunity to plug this park on Petullo Avenue because I know the Parks Department has done a terrific amount of work out there as a great, maybe even a fall destination with the colors for our family to go out there and enjoy an afternoon on a nice trail. The director of parks could maybe offer a little bit more comment as to to the background on the creation of this park to wait on Petullo Avenue. There's something to watch though.
Thank you worship. Through to the councillor's question, it is one of our newest trails. And it is the further, furthest, most trail from most people, but it is certainly worth the drive out. It's a circular trail that covers, you can either do one loop that covers about three and a half kilometers or one that is about one and a half kilometers each. And it it is a very, a very natural and spectacular trail.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up, we have committee appointments and as always, we have so many great members in the community that help out with committees and our boards, advisory groups, et cetera. These volunteers, of course, sometimes have to come and go based on changes that take place in their busy schedules and life. So we'll go with councillor Fraser and a seconder will be councillor Acioli. Thank you.
Thank you worship. That Woodstock City Council approved the appointment of members of the public to the committees as outlined in the report.
Thank you. Discussion? Councillor Fraser?
Thank you worship. First of all, I would like to thank all the members of the public that applied to these committee vacancies. If it wasn't for citizens that want to be involved, we'd be at a loss some days. So it's really appreciated that we have a lot of citizens interested in our committees and there'll be other vacancies coming up. So anybody that didn't apply, had applied this time and weren't appointed, don't give up. There'll be other events or other committees have vacancies. And I'd like to congratulate Glenn Newersley's for being appointed to the committee adjustment and Michelle Woodrow for being appointed to the property standards committee.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up, of course, we have the electronic meeting. So this is asking that we continue this format, which ensures that if there's certain issues that come up where we want to have members of the community as delegations or for presentations, much like we did today with several little planning items, it allows us to continue to maintain the proper physical distancing and keep everyone safe. So we're looking at continuing this on and looking for a motion. So we'll have councillor Acioli and seconded by councillor Tate. Thank you.
Move by myself that Woodstock City Council continue with the practice of fully electronic council meetings at this time. And further that the necessary public health measures and required restrictions with respect to the COVID nineteen pandemic continue to be monitored in order to determine an appropriate time to return to in-person council meetings. And further that staff be directed to present options for hybrid participation in meetings as part of the twenty twenty-one capital budget deliberations.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries. And we have no notices of motion or new business. So next up is the bylaws. And a couple of them that were printed in the agenda, of course, will no longer be going through. And we'll go with councillor Schadenberg and they'll be seconded by looking for a hand, we'll go councillor Fraser. Thank you.
Yeah, move by councillor Mark Schadenberg, seconded by councillor Ron Fraser. The following bylaws be given a first and second reading. Ninety-four, one, two, dash, twenty, a bylaw to amend zoning by law number eight, six, two, six, dash, ten as amended, and Z N eight, dash, twenty, dash, fourteen for Masters Drive. And ninety-four, fifteen, dash, twenty, a bylaw to provide for the dedication and naming of parks and highways in the city of Woodstock, actually parks, highways in city of Woodstock. That's ninety-four, one, five, dash, twenty.
Thank you. And you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. Councillor Schadenberg?
A move by councillor Mark Schadenberg, seconded by councillor Ron Fraser. The following bylaws be given a third and final reading. Ninety-four, one, two, dash, twenty, ninety-four, one, five, dash, twenty.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries. And today we'll go with, let's see, we'll start in this corner and it's different on everyone's screen, I think. So we're going to start with councillor Tate.
I just want to let council know that I had the privilege of meeting some local business owners in town. Mark and Laurie Harvey, they built the new inner core building on the corner of Woodall and Devonshire. And very nice people. And just so you know, they ended up moving their entire family to Woodstock. They moved their parents, their children, their grandchildren. And it was really nice speaking to them because they were actually looking at another municipality, but kudos to our city staff. They were very easy to work with. They were very helpful and they chose Woodstock. So thank you to them. And also we should, I mean, we all comment on how great our staff is, but that is a very large business and they brought the entire family. So I just want to comment and thank them for that. And that's it.
Thank you. Councillor Talbot?
Thank you worship. Just want to, we're coming in, we just finished one holiday being Thanksgiving and we've seen some of the results of COVID and social distancing maybe wasn't as good as it should have been. So just reminding people now that Dr. Tam has said she sees no reason for Halloween to not to continue. So it's going to continue. So just to make sure that you follow the guidelines. Some people have come up with some very inventive ideas on how to give out Halloween candy. Some parents have chosen not to send their kids out, but do things at home. So whatever you choose, please make sure that you're safe and you follow the guidelines. We're not in the clear yet and we're very fortunate in southwestern public health area. Our cases have been very low compared to those surrounding us. And that's not to say that things couldn't change very quickly. But Christmas is only two months away and we want to make sure that we'll be able to get together with a few of our family members. So please just remember, wear your mask, wash your hands. And I was listening to the CBC today and they said, if you sing the happy birthday song twice, that's how long you need to wash your hands for. So make sure that you get it all over and to continue to use hand sanitizer, but also the social distancing. So just be safe.
Thank you. Councillor Fraser?
Thank you worship. First of all, thank councillor Tate for bringing up the intercore company coming to Woodstock. And only did the owners bring their whole family here, but to my understanding, there is at least around twenty of their employees also moved to Woodstock. And I know there's actually three of the employee families living on my street, just down the street from me. I've met a couple and they're all wonderful people and it's quite a business. And thank you councillor Talbot for reminding us how soon Christmas is coming. And I think I'm going to have to start some online shopping. Yes. So anyways, I don't have much to say. Halloween is coming up and I want everybody to enjoy that next activity as best we can. And through these trying times. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Schadenberg?
First of all, I hope I'm not stealing the thunder of our councillor Connie Lauder because she does so much work at the hospital herself. But the Heart FM fourth annual give thanks to your hospital radiothon is today. And you can make a donation at four two one, four two five five by texting thanks to four, five, six, seven, eight, or visit the website to www.givethanksradiothon.ca. So it continues all day today with proceeds going to the critical care unit at Woodstock Hospital. And we just talked about COVID nineteen and quite a bit of it. One of the great gathering places in the city of Woodstock has always been the Oxford County Naval Veterans Association and the Navy Club on James Street. And they've got two events coming up in the next couple of days. Friday night, Reuben Sandwich Night, four thirty till seven. That's tomorrow, October sixteenth. And they also have a tomorrow or Saturday, Saturday, October seventeenth to twelve noon, hot roast beef sandwich afternoon for a ten dollars. So you contact Oxford County Naval Veterans Association and maybe meet your friends there because it is open. And of course, you can also take out your orders for the Oxford County Naval Veterans Association fundraising and gathering events over the next couple of days. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Councillor Lauder? We'll get your mic there. Sorry, might have been a double click.
Thanks councillor Schadenberg for bringing that forward about the hospital radiothon. I've made my donation today and actually it's just not today. It goes on for a few days anyhow. And the funds that will be collected are going toward the critical care equipment. And I challenge my fellow councillors to make a donation for this great worthy cause. And that's all from tonight, today. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Acioli?
Thank you worship. I just want to say be careful Halloween. Hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving, of course. Want to keep everybody healthy and safe. Been getting a lot. Been getting a lot of messages and as far as personally I'm concerned, if you do it carefully. Enjoy Halloween with the kids. If you're handing out candy, of course, just do it responsibly and. Use different ways, tongs, or whatever you can to keep everybody safe as well. Big thank you to all of city staff for everything they've been doing lately. I just can't imagine. They've been going through as far as like parks and and everybody. It's been such a trying time. Through all this and as far as Christmas is concerned. I'm encouraging everybody to shop local, try to get in there, spend those dollars here in the community if at all possible. Go out, there is different ways to order on. Locally or stop in. Of course, a lot of businesses are still open. So try to. Try to help out. I encourage you to go to restaurants and everything. Just be safe and healthy. Okay? Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. And just so amazing to see some of the the great responses that have happened recently within the community from. The Smile Cookie Campaign, the funding that was given to United Way and Secure House, some of the virtual hikes, just how we respond. It's pretty great to see people stepping up in the community. And again, the efforts that people have to keep everyone safe and follow the advice of our community health team. Again, to make sure that we can all try and get back to normal as quick as possible. So keep up the good work, everyone. And we had quite a lot of responses, of course, regarding the water and wastewater rates. With the information that had been provided in the What's on Woodstock magazine. I want to thank our county colleagues for allowing a deferral yesterday at county council of those rates. There they have made an adjustment from what was first presented and they they did lower what the overall increase would be. But again, some of the rationale on projects and costing and timing. And how the stands continue to shift from one plan to the next. Asset management plan, reserve plans, looking at servicing other communities such as Princeton and all of a sudden wholesale changes. So. Information seems to come out that contradicts previous statements from some of the staff. Time and time again. So we'll keep the residents of Woodstock updated as we continue down this path to. Make sure that our local government is open and transparent. And that governance is ensuring that we're doing what is best for all ratepayers. Again, much like today with the presentation on the proposed North Transit System for our neighbors to the north. That the county has become involved in. I thank Counselor Tate for that motion that came forward that gives clear direction to the city. To hold the feet to the fire of the county that this is unacceptable. When we ask for specific numbers and they are unable to give those numbers. That speaks volumes. The motto of the county of Oxford is growing stronger together. And myself, as well as some of our other county colleagues, the politicians that have been elected to be that voice. To the county bureaucracy are going to be holding their feet to the fire. So reach out to any of the other mayors that you know and city county counselors. We have a few that are still in opposition to what is in the best interest to the city of Woodstock citizens. We look at our own budget this year and how proactive we were as a council. By passing the budget by stripping out some of those enhancements to services that our citizens have been looking forward to for a long time. We wanted to be prudent. We understood that revenues for some of our programming would decrease. We understood that the payment of those taxes on properties may be delayed. We were very proactive in eliminating any of those late payment fees for individuals. And we have numerous people within our community that have been looking forward to the enhancements to our own transit system. And to hear that the county of Oxford, when they do not have jurisdiction within the municipal act to operate a transit system. And when that's pointed out, they change the wording all at a grant. Well, I can tell you this. If it acts like a duck, walks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's still a duck. And we are going to hold them accountable for this duck because putting these costs onto our citizens is not sustainable. If our neighbors would like to have enhanced services for their individuals. We are more than happy to sit down and talk with them, much like we did with our neighbors to the south. The town of Tilsenberg came and asked Woodstock about utilizing some of our bus capacity. And we were able to reach an agreement that is very cost effective. No bus purchase required. And when you look at running a transit system, gross dollars matters. So to even within our local media, the Sentinel Review published an article where they quoted the director who was here presenting today. David Simpson, continuing to say that the system is sustainable. It is a little unfortunate that they didn't spend a little more time doing research. And perhaps reaching out to the individuals who have been trying to hold those feet to the fire. Because as you heard today, costs that are about three hundred and eighty dollars in the initial setup per ride. You can take a private limo for less money in Oxford County than riding that bus. And when they reach peak capacity, that it would still be over a hundred dollars a ride when we have private companies out there. Uber, taxis, others that would do that service for less money. I think it's imperative that we continue to make sure we keep our citizens informed. Because every dollar that the county of Oxford looks for for tax levy. The citizens of Woodstock pay between forty and forty-five percent of that dollar. And that's taking money away from our own enhancements to service. We have individuals who have migrated from other small areas in Oxford here to Woodstock. So that they can enjoy a higher quality of life, get to their appointments on time, get to work on time. And here they are within the community looking for a seventh bus to get them to work on time. Some of them were so thankful when council extended the hours and we have thank you cards for the money that they've saved. But we also have on some of those same thank you cards that they can't wait to see the buses get past midnight so they can get home. From that evening shift and continue to put more food on the table for their family, maybe save up a little money so that they can have a special outing. So to hear from one of our staff members at the county of Oxford that they didn't take time to take. A dollar value and divide by the number of riders, the same question that was asked. In another municipal council. And they were not able to take the time, even after the question has been asked numerous times. It is a big disappointment. And I tell the citizens of Woodstock right now that I will continue to advocate for them. That people understand what is going on across the street. With that, I think before I get in trouble, I better ask for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Fraser, seconded by Counselor.